Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. The Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning is calling this virtual public hearing to order. It is now 9:02 a.m. on Thursday, September 2nd, 2021. Notice of this morning's virtual hearing was provided via email to senators, stakeholders and local media on August 26, 2021 for the five-day notice and August 31st for the 48-hour notice, thus meeting the requirements of open government law. I would like to thank my colleagues who have joined me here today. Senator Telo Taitigui, Senator Joanne Brown and also Speaker Therese Terlachy. The purpose of this hearing is to receive testimony on the following items. The executive appointment of Ms. Claire R. Delgado to serve as a member, real estate broker representative of the Guam Real Estate Commission, Bill 162-36COR sponsored by myself. It's an act to amend Section 46116 of Chapter 46, Section 49107F of Chapter 49, Section 50119 of Chapter 50, Section 51204 of Chapter 51, all of Title 10 Guam Code annotated, and to amend Section 10019G of Chapter 10 Title 22 Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations Relative to Program Funds Maintained by the Guam Environmental Protection Agency. The third item on the agenda is to hear testimony for Bill Number 165-36COR sponsored by Speaker Therese M. Terlachy and co-sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez. It's an act to amend Sections 100115A2 of Chapter 10 Title 22 Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations relative to removing the caps on civil penalties for violations of the Guam Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Regulations. The committee will continue to receive testimony until 4:00 p.m. Wednesday, September 8th, 2021. Please address testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue, Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning, or can be dropped off the mailboxes or emailed to office@senatorparas.org. The rules of conduct for this hearing as far as follows. The host will mute all participants until called upon. Virtual background should not be utilized during the hearing and participant's face must be visible at all times. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted and that you're speaking into the microphone. Individuals testifying shall be recognized by the chair before speaking and shall state their names for record-keeping purposes. Questions and testimony should be confined to the substance and nature of the agenda. Now to begin our agenda with the executive appointment of Ms. Claire R. Delgado to serve as a member real estate broker representative of the Guam Real Estate Commission. So the Guam Real Estate Commission functions are as follows. They may adopt rules and regulations related to the administration of real estate as long as it adheres to law. The commission is responsible for hearing client complaints towards licensed realtors, brokers, and determining judgments and terms of complaints filed. The commission may make recommendations and suggestions of policy to the commissioner as the commission deems beneficial and proper for the welfare and progress of real estate licensees and the public of the real estate business on Guam. Notices were sent to Department of Revenue and Taxation and the Guam Real Estate Commission. I would like to now open the floor to those who have come to testify on behalf of the nominee and then we'll follow it up by testimony by the nominee herself. So I would like to now invite Mr. Chris Felix to present his testimony. Good morning.
Good morning, Senator. Thank you. And Senators, I'm obviously testifying in favor of the nominee, Claire Delgado. She's been an associate. We've worked together for many years. I'm just proud to support her on this nomination. I think it's, I think she'd be perfect for the position in the commission. She's had many years as a broker, many years running companies and she served nationally on the National Association of Realtors. She has coached, I think she's co-chaired and then chaired a national committee, which is, I think she's the only one from Guam who's ever done that. So I, her experience and everything is just ideal. She's a personal friend and her ethics are just of the highest nature and every deal I've done with her has been above board and straight and so I just cannot say enough to support her. I aside, I'd like to keep her very busy so I could make some real estate commissions while she's working on the commission. But thank you. Thank you for your time, Senators.
Thank you so much, Mr. Felix. We did receive testimonies in favor of the nominee from various members in the industry, from Christopher Murphy, who's also the chairman of the Real Estate Commission, Frank Pangolinen, Joanne Iggy and also Fabrian Rispisio, who has requested that the committee read her testimony into the record, which I will do right now. It says, Dear Senator Perez, thank you for the opportunity to allow me to submit written testimony in favor of the nomination of Ms. Claire R. Delgado to serve as a member of the Guam Real Estate Commission as a real estate broker representative. I have had the privilege of working with Ms. Claire R. Delgado as a Realtor on Guam and as a member of the Guam Association of Realtors, specifically on GARR's Legislative Committee. I first met Claire when I obtained my Realtor's license and was interviewing brokers to find an organization to, quote, "hang my license," unquote. At that time, she was the principal broker for Century 21 Commonwealth. I chose to work with Claire as my broker because I was impressed by her knowledge of the industry, her reputation as a person of integrity, her sincerity and warmth as a person. When she opened her own company, Home Ventures Realty, I decided to move my license to continue to work with her because it is important to me to work with a broker that is honest and trustworthy for their knowledge of the industry, her tendency, diligence and patience. Claire has helped me to successfully meet the needs of my clients and close some complex transactions. As a 2020 president of GARR, Claire was a driving force in developing, implementing and executing the necessary guidelines, procedures and protocols for our industry to be in line with the governor's mandates. As president, she mobilized GARR Board to advocate for our industry to be considered essential during the pandemic. Under her leadership, GARR was successful in this endeavor. This was a huge victory for all members of our industry as it enabled us to continue to serve our clients and contribute to the livelihoods of our economy. Thank you for your time and I trust that you will find Ms. Claire R. Delgado worthy of your support and that you move to confirm her to the Guam Real Estate Commission as a real estate broker representative. Respectfully, Fabrian Cruz Rispisio. All right, so I think that concludes those that are here to testify here in the public hearing. So I would like to now invite the nominee Claire Delgado to present her testimony.
Thank you, Senator. Good morning, Senators and good morning, everyone. My name is Claire Delgado and I am the humbled appointee for the Real Estate Commission. I'm honored to be here before you today as an appointee for the Guam Real Estate Commission. I thank you for this opportunity to speak in front of you today. Real estate has always been my passion. I've been licensed for 15 years now and there's no other career I'd rather have. In 2006, I started my career as a sales licensee with Century 21 Commonwealth Realty and it was only two years later that I was asked by the owner of the company I worked for to take on the role of broker in charge of my realty office as the associate broker to manage your relationships. From there, I delved into the business full-on, learning as much as I can, giving input where I can and helping solve issues when I can. It's also very humbling to me when I'm sought out for advice or to help with the problem, not only from agents within the office, but also agents and brokers outside the office. Several years later, I, along with my current business partners, ventured out and opened our own real estate firm, which is Home Ventures Realty, a decision that far exceeded our expectations even today. I've always had the desire to give back to an industry that means very much to me. As such, I've served on the Board of Directors for the Guam Association of Realtors since 2008 up until the present in several capacities to include being elected twice as president in 2013 and again in 2020. I felt that there was also much I can contribute in the way of helping shape the direction or provide suggestions and input regarding policies and procedures for the association and for the benefit of the membership, our clients and the general public. The board in its capacity fulfills the vision and the mission of the association and I am proud to be a part of that. I've learned from so many folks, especially one of my mentors who was Chris Felix. Thank you, Chris. Being president in 2020 was not easy, especially during such an unprecedented time and having to navigate through that, making policies and decisions never done before had further strengthened my resolve to work hard, effectively communicate and do what is right for everyone I serve. I've also served within the National Association of Realtors as Board Director, which is part of the decision-making body, a setting very similar to the functions of the GARR Board, but naturally on a national level. Additionally, among 1.5 million members, I've been appointed to committee chair positions and I have gladly accepted. Through my experiences, I believe I've gained the knowledge I feel to be beneficial to this commission. I feel I have the ability to set aside personal feelings or preferences and objectively look at an issue for the greater good. I believe this quality is vital in making sound decisions. And additionally, as principal broker for many years, I've also brokered many transactions, large and small, simple and complex, local and foreign, that further supplements what I can bring to the table. As a Realtor, I also abide by a code of ethics outlining standards of practice towards fellow members and colleagues, clients and the general public. Honorable Senators, I am fully committed to fulfill the duties as an appointee to the Real Estate Commission. I'm humbled to be considered for this position and pledge to work alongside members of this commission whom I deeply respect. I pledge to make objective decisions without personal regard or personal relationships that may be before me. I've done so before while in my leadership capacity as a broker and as a broker and now hopefully as a member of the Real Estate Commission. Once again, I thank you for the opportunity and I look forward to the challenges and hard work that lies ahead. See to it, Massey.
This is Massey, Mr. Delgado, for your acceptance of the nomination. So just the term is from, it actually started in 2020, but the term ends in January 15, 2024, so we do appreciate your acceptance. And you know, judging from my experience and you know, your presence is, you know, you're not new to many of these public hearings and from what I could tell, the words ring true from the testimony provided by yourself and others here that you are looking to serve the public and you're able to, you know, put aside, you know, I guess, look at the greater good and follow the mandates of law. So yeah, I guess having said that, I know you do have in your packet, you mentioned you do have some sort of financial interest. So I think it's, I guess, the question that I have is how can you ensure, how do you know when to, you know, perhaps when there's a conflict of interest that exists as a real estate, as a member of the real estate industry? You know, what are the cues that would tell you that perhaps maybe you need to recuse yourself from a situation?
You know, that's a fair question. Guam is so small. We know everybody. We've done business with everybody and being on the Real Estate Commission and also as a Realtor and a licensed real estate broker, there are times in which we're going to have to make decisions that may affect a personal friend or colleague or someone that, you know, could possibly do business with me in the future. 2020 has taught me a lot last year and I've had to make some very difficult decisions that affected people that I know. But one of the things that I've held really steadfast was it has to be enough, you know, it cannot be personal when it comes to matters of law, when it comes to matters of being ethical, when it comes to matters of of real estate and we have to set those aside and try to be as objective as possible. And if I cannot do that, you know, then, you know, if there is a a reason for stepping aside in order for someone else to handle that, then, you know, I would always do what's the right thing to do and never let, you know, at least try my best to not let anything personal get in the way. It has to be, you know, all about what's the right thing to do.
Absolutely. I think this is one of the hardest jobs when you have to regulate your own industry, right? And it takes somebody like you to know, you know, to put aside those interests and look at the greater good. So thank you for that. Yeah. So the other thing is I know that you worked very closely with the chairman and a lot of the initiatives. So what do you, what do you see as, you know, perhaps what contributions you would like to make in this term as a board member, a commission member?
Well, and thank you for that question. You know, Chris Murphy and I, we've spoken a lot, especially last year, and I have to commend Chris Murphy and the rest of the commission because they've come a long way as far as regulations and filling in the gaps and all of that within our industry. We've talked about, one of the things that I've been an advocate of is education for new licensees, for brokers, for renewals. I'd like to work more closely with Chris and the commission on that. I think they've done a fabulous, fantastic job so far. There's always room for forward movement and I will bring whatever experiences I have and what I see as a broker and as a member of the Board of Guam Association of Realtors, you know, to to the table and provide as much input as I can.
Great. Thank you for those responses. So I don't have further questions maybe at this point, so I'd like to open up the floor to my colleagues. And first of all, I do want to recognize Senator Tony Ada for joining us here today. Thank you so much, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So I'd like to open up the floor to my colleagues, Speaker Therese Terlachy, if you have any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, Claire and Chris. Good morning and thank you for your service and your willingness to serve on this commission and I want, I think you've answered all my questions, so I want to thank you for that, for stating straight up the issue that I'm always very concerned about and that is how you deal with knowing everybody who is in this industry and having to regulate them when you're, you know, one of them and they're obviously going to be your friends, your coworkers, things like that. So I thank you for your straightforward answers on that and it is a challenge, I think, in Guam. And so I'm glad you recognize that. And also for your efforts or desire to increase education. I think I've always known you in your roles that I've seen through my role here as well that is one of your goals is always to increase the education and by doing that, increase the standards of the profession, keep them high and keep Guam, you know, and for the customers, it's really for the people of Guam to be protected as well. So I want to thank you for that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Speaker. And I do apologize. We have Joanne Iggy, who is here to present testimony. My apologies, I didn't see you. So I would like to recognize you at this time to present testimony.
Thank you, Madam Chair, but it's okay. I'm fine. I emailed the testimony and bottom line is after retiring from GCC in 2014, I got into the real estate ministry in 2015. I've been in numerous committees for the Guam Association of Realtors, education, legislative and the election committee. But in 2020, I was the secretary for GARR and I was able to work closely with Claire being in that position and I saw how she worked as far as professionally and at the same token, it was always about the membership and what was good for the members and the clients and the community at large. It was never about her. I know firsthand that she was always in Zoom meetings. Last year, we were always on emails as far as like quick motions to adopt this and adopt that because of COVID. So I saw that she was really, she was a good leader and you know, for a tough year like last year, I commend her and she's a great person to work with. We were able to work together closely, but on the other hand, I got to know her a lot and on the professional side, coming from a post-secondary industry, she is, she's a good friend also and she's professional in all aspects. Thank you and thank you, Senators and be safe.
This is Massey, Joanne, for that very valuable testimony. Yeah, it's so important that we have people with integrity in these positions. So this is Massey. I would like to now invite Senator Telo Taitigui for any questions or comments at this time.
This is Massey, Madam Chair, and good morning to everyone here in the Zoom and especially to you, Claire. Thank you so much. And for the record, I am related to Claire. Not only is she a person that is proven herself as a very dedicated individual, but most especially she's fun to work with, like Joanne said. It's one person who's, you know, book smart and dedicated and straightforward and honest, but to have that combined with just a fun person to be with and make you feel comfortable, that's Claire. So I want to thank you so much for stepping up to the plate as well, Claire. And I know you're going to do a good job. You've proven yourself, you know, throughout all the other committees that you've been on and working with. So I appreciate it. But I have to ask, do you, how many times do you meet during the year with the commission?
I don't have the answer for that. I mean, I would defer to Chris Murphy, the chair.
Okay, so how many, you know, how many times during the year does the commission meet?
Yeah, Chris Murphy's not here at this time.
Yeah, he's here. He's here. Can you hear me, Chris?
Chris Felix.
Chris Murphy. I'm sorry, Chris Felix. My bad. Okay, you can go like that to me later. Chris Felix, sorry. I do. How many times do you meet a year, Chris, the commission?
Well, I'm not on the commission currently. In the past, but I believe Chris Murphy meets either every other month or quarterly now.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Okay. And thank you so much, Chris. So Claire, I really appreciate, you know, all the hard work that you've put into other areas. Excuse me. And I'm sure you're going to do the same here on the Guam Real Estate Commission. I think it's important that you do meet. I've heard that the commission has not met on a regular basis and with Zoom, it makes it even more convenient for people to attend these meetings. And I'm finding out that because of Zoom, you get more participants showing up than if it was at some other destination, everybody has to get in their car and drive to. What's important too is that the minutes of the meeting are also posted on the website as well so that we can keep tabs and most especially to be transparent with what the commission is doing. So other than that, just ask that you do meet on a regular basis and everything is posted on the website because you guys do have a website that's up and running and I appreciate the way it's set up. It's very user-friendly. Thank you again, Claire. Be safe and this is Massey to my colleagues and thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity.
This is Massey, Senator Taitigui. I would like to recognize Senator Clint Rigel, who's joined us here today. Thank you, Senator. So now I would like to open the floor to Senator Joanne Brown, if she has any comments or questions for the nominee.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and certainly good morning to all of you and Ms. Delgado and your appointment to serve on the Real Estate Commission. I did want to ask, certainly appreciate your extensive background in the work that you do. Obviously, it's something you're very passionate about. But having been in real estate all these years, what would you like to see changed or improved and what do you think in your role in serving in the commission, you would like to see as part of your legacy in improving policies with regards to how real estate operates on Guam? What improvements do you think you can help contribute from a policy side to the commission?
Thank you, Senator. I mentioned before that education was one of the, one of the things that I'd like to see continue to move forward. Again, I think the commission has done a really good job so far. I think there's also room for a more forward movement and I think that Chris has that on his radar. As far as, you know, I'd like to see if it's not being worked on already and forgive me, you know, there may be some things that the commission is already working on, but you know, licensing has always been something that is, you know, having to do everything online. I think that's something that the commission was, if I recall my last conversation with Chris, just to make renewals easier, just getting everything working, you know, I think one of the problems that we've had with license renewals is our ID cards, we don't get those. The machine is always down. I'd like to see, you know, if if we can work on getting the ID card machine up and running again. You know, and other than that, I mean, it's working with the commission to see what they're working on and, you know, see how we can improve, you know, education, renewals, you know, and just, you know, just raising the standards of our profession.
Well, thank you. I certainly appreciate, you know, your comments and what you hope to do. We look forward to your your service and thank you for also taking the time to contribute to this process because having your experience, I think, brings a lot to the table and I think that can enhance the overall industry, not just for fellow realtors, but also for the public that you serve with regards to these transactions. So thank you very much and certainly good luck on your new appointment. With that, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to ask your question.
This is Massey, Senator Brown. Now I'd like to offer the floor to Senator Ada, if he has any comments or questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, everyone. Good morning, Ms. Delgado, and thank you for answering the governor's call to, you know, step onto the position on the board. I don't have no questions, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank the nominee for actually taking the time out of, especially their busy schedule, you know, in real estate. You look at the market trends nowadays, what's going on and, you know, I know she's going to be very busy and hopefully that, you know, her time on the board will also be productive and not more of a coming together, right? And ensuring that both your professional career and also your career on the board will be able to move forward together. But other than that, thank you, Ms. Delgado, for again, taking the nomination and I look forward to voting on your nomination, hopefully in our next session, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Senator Ada. Yes, that's the goal, is to get it on the session floor. This is Massey for your comments. So now I would like to open the floor to Senator Rigel, if he has any questions or comments for the nominee.
Thank you, Senator Perez. No questions or anything. Just thank the nominee for accepting this nomination and I look forward to voting on it. Thank you, Senator Perez.
All right. Thank you, Senator Rigel, and again, thank you so much, Claire, for your commitment to our community and I look forward to as well for your service. So yeah, best of luck, best of luck. And looking forward to working with you as well. There are no others here to testify. The hearing for the executive appointment of Ms. Claire R. Delgado to serve as a member, real estate broker representative of the Guam Real Estate Commission is now duly heard. It is now 9:30 a.m. Have a great day.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, everyone.
Take care and be safe.
Be safe.
Right. So now we move on to the next item of our agenda is to hear the testimony in regards to Bill Number 162-36COR sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez. It's an act to amend Section 46116 of Chapter 46, Section 49107F of Chapter 49, Section 50119 of Chapter 50, Section 51204 of Chapter 51, all of Title 10 Guam Code annotated, and to amend Section 100119G of Chapter 10 Title 22 Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations Relative to Program Funds Maintained by the Guam Environmental Protection Agency. So yeah, so thank you so much, Claire. You know, feel free to You know, feel free to, to stay on, you're welcome to stay on, but if you would like to, yeah, thank you. All right, so just a little opening statement regarding this bill. Bill Number 162-36 will allow Guam Environmental Protection Agency to comply with the conditions of grant funds received by Guam EPA from US EPA and to enable Guam EPA to fully carry out its statutory purpose by ensuring that Guam EPA acquires and retains control over the funds generated by Guam EPA programs. One such requirement is outlined by the conditions of Guam EPA's consolidated grant is the agency administrator's ability to control and maintain programmatic funding for revenue generated by the agency. Presently, revenue generated through the agency's air pollution control program, the litter control program, water resources program, the water pollution control program is, is subjugated to legislative control and appropriation, and therefore unaligned with the criteria of the consolidated grant. It would serve our island well that we do everything we must to further secure this precious funding until such time Guam EPA can achieve full autonomy and are no longer reliant on US EPA income. It is with the agent, it's within the agency's best intentions to sustain its own operations at some point in the future, and that the successful introduction and passage of this legislation herein will provide necessary foundation to do just that. So we received word this morning, specific to the Water Development Fund, that Guam EPA is in, is in discussion with it, with Guam Water Works and Weary on the possibility of further amendments to this section. So now I would like to open the floor to those who have come to testify in regards to Bill 162-36. And I have on the list at this time, let me just pull that up really quick. Okay, so we have Brian Baird in from Guam EPA to present testimony. So welcome, Brian. You're welcome to present at this time.
Thank you, Senator. And just a quick word of introduction for the folks on the call that are wondering about my title. I'm a U.S. Public Health Service Officer, and I am detailed to the Guam EPA from the US EPA. I'm serving as the Chief Engineer. Despite my uniform and title, I've been in Micronesia for the majority of my career. I was in CNMI for about 20 years. I know I work with many of you on the development of some of the stormwater standards and manuals and such. But that said, I'll get right into this. I, and quick word, I was chatting with Dr. Jensen just before this from Weary. He's having some internet problems, so he asked me to give some of the information that he had wanted to give, and if he's able to talk, he'll talk as well. But on this bill, Guam EPA, we, we support, we definitely support the intent of this bill. Control of these funds is a very important step toward achieving the stated purpose of the bill, which would be to reduce or eventually end Guam EPA's dependency on federal grants. We'd like to note that the federal grants that we receive as an agency, if you look at them in terms of inflation over the years, have actually decreased since the Guam EPA was established in the 1970s. I think we started out with about 2 million a year in the 70s, and we're at about 3 million a year right now in federal grants. So anything we can do to retain control of the funds that we are able to generate locally is welcome. On the topic of Chapter 46, let me just read the explanation for why we're asking for some more time here. Guam EPA is currently in active discussion with the University of Guam, Weary, and the Guam Water Works Authority to develop proposed amendments to the existing statute, which is Chapter 46, that would meet the dual and complementary objectives of supporting applied research on topics of priority interest to Guam EPA and GWA, while training interns as candidates for permanent positions at Guam EPA and GWA. Interns would earn graduate degrees in environmental science while serving as research assistants at Weary, or they would work on designated priority research topics. While Guam EPA, GWA, and Weary have already agreed in principle on this concept, we need a bit more time to work out the details and to work with, with you, Senator Perez and the other senators, to try to incorporate whatever language we need into this bill. And that's the extent, that's what I've got. Thank you. Maybe Dr. Jensen, if he's able to talk, could go on now.
This is Masi, Mr. Baird. Yeah, definitely, we could still amend the bill. So, yeah, we welcome any kind of verbiage to, to do that, to ensure that, you know, you know, definitely, we need to build the capacity of Guam EPA when it comes to staffing. You know, as, as retirement is occurring with the older staff, there needs to be, you know, yeah. And we have one of those here, and he's in very smiley mood. But, yeah, we, we do definitely need to increase capacity, whether through attrition or just, you know, just beefing it up, because, you know, the mandates that are before you, and obviously, it has an impact to protecting our environment if we don't staff properly. So, yeah, we're definitely willing to work with Guam EPA in making that language more amenable to increasing the capacity when it comes to this fund or any of these funds. So I would just actually allow, would like to encourage or open the floor to Ms. Conchita Titanow, if she's, if she has anything to add to the testimony for, for Bill 162.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and appreciate this opportunity to, to provide testimony. I support the bill. I've been, you know, most of you know me, I've been around, I've been with the agency for at least 30 years. Joanne, I've worked with Joanne Brown, when she was Deputy Administrator of Guam EPA back during the Ad administration. She, so she understands the, the issue of funding. If I could just ask our senators to draw their attention to Page 1, beginning on line 13, and I think that really says it all, which is that GIPA cannot continue to rely indefinitely, indefinitely upon grant funds received by, from US EPA. And, and a lot of it is because with every, with every changing administration, the priorities tend to change, which means the money vacillates, and we must have access to these funds on a continuous basis. What the law does, I believe, is it corrects the exist, what this legislation does is it corrects the existing law and gives Guam EPA continuous access to the fees and fines that are deposited into the special funds. Because the way it works right now is we have to get the, the funds from the, from, from the special funds, the monies from the special funds have to be appropriated every year, even though it's non-lapsing. It still needs to be appropriated by the legislature. And those are my comments, and I thank you for this opportunity to, to, to provide testimony.
Right, this is Masi, Conchita, for those powerful words. So now I'd like to open the floor to Ms. Dr. John Jensen for his testimony and recommendations.
Thank you, Senator. If I cut in and out, it's because the internet has been kind of unstable here. But I'd like to just say I'm in total support and agreement with what's been said so far by Captain Baird and Ms. Titanow. The language that that he read, Captain Baird read, was developed by the three of us, GWA, Weary, and Guam EPA. And as you mentioned, we need a little more time to work out the details, but we're in agreement that the, or a good use of these funds would, would be to do the kind of capacity building which you mentioned. We're, at Weary, we're, we take great pride in our record for having brought about 40 people through the program, of which 25 people are living and working here on Guam in the environmental capacity of one kind or another. And this would be a win-win situation. We have the expertise on local water resource problems and longstanding connection with the engineering staff at GWA and the technical staff at Guam EPA. And we're prepared to, to do this. We've got a standing model in place and a track record to do it, so it's just a matter of putting in place the agreement to put the, put together the, the organizational structure to do it, and we can do it. We're, we're, we're here to serve, and I take great pride in the effectiveness of the service we've provided so far. And I just want to express my appreciation to the legislature, members of the legislature, and all the community leaders that have supported us and continue to support us. It's, it's our pleasure to serve. Thank you.
This is Masi, Dr. Jensen, for your testimony and for your participation today. Yeah, I look forward to hearing and seeing the, any kind of amended language for the bill. And, but I think overall, I think it's very important to increase the autonomy of Guam EPA, and this is just one aspect that is needed to ensure that, you know, appropriation, that EPA has control over their special funds, as rightfully, as rightfully so. So I don't have any questions at this time. I know Administrator Leon Graus is sick at this moment, so if there's any updates, I'll definitely try to reach out to him as well. But, yeah, thank you to Guam EPA for your participation and testimony. So I'd like to open up the floor to my colleagues for, with, if they have any questions or comments. Speaker Turaki, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks to those who have testified. I just had a couple of questions. One, I, I wasn't able to research the, the source of funding for the Water Research and Development Fund. Is that from fines also?
I believe that part of that is the, the drillers, the, the water well developers, they have to provide some sort of funding for the permits. And I think that's one of the sources, if not the only, I don't know. If Captain Baird can chime in or Conchita.
Yes, Madam Chairman, the primary source right now, in fact, the only source for the last several years has been the well permit fees that we, that we receive. I don't think there's been any fines that have been issued under that program for quite a while.
All right.
And it's not much. I mean, we generate maybe about 50,000 to 60,000 a year on that program.
Yes, I'm expecting that with all of these, even with this authorization, that it's still not enough for EPA, that they would, yeah, still need to find significant sources of income to become truly, you know, less reliant on federal funding. But does anyone have any comment on, on the change that's proposed in this bill from that Water Research and Development Fund being administered by a committee, which was Weary EPA and PUAG or GWA, and changed instead to the Administrator of EPA? There's no objection to that?
No objection from Guam EPA, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, and, and otherwise, just in general, maybe Conchita, you with EPA, you've seen different administrators come and go, and so all of these funds will now be managed by the Administrator. Do you see any issues with that, that, that we should provide for, or? The rules are pretty clear what it, what it can be used for, so they are bound to that. No problems?
No problems. Thank you, Meta. Thank you.
Okay, I totally support this, and I'm glad for the testimony to clarify some of the issues, and I hope that in addition to the enforcement, the programs, the planning, that, yeah, that we can increase our regulatory, or, you know, our monitoring capacity as well. So thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Speaker, for those questions. So I'd like to now recognize Senator Telotidegui.
This is Masi, Madam Chair, and thank you, everyone, for being here this morning. Are we still on this morning? Okay, this morning. Okay. I just have a question. I, I'm not sure, Conchita might know it, or yourself, Brian, Captain Brian, with regards to, you know, the latest CRER report, period ending July 30th, 2021, the Air Pollution Control Special Fund and Water Protection Fund are tracking, you know, below the adopted revenue levels. And I was wondering, has the general fund been used to cover any shortfalls in these special revenue accounts anytime during FY '21?
Could you repeat that for the Air Pollution Control Fund? What is it that, that's, because we haven't changed our rules, we haven't changed our fees in quite some time. And, and I know that that was under discussion, you know, internally, but we also have to be, we are also told, and we're very mindful of the, the current economy on the island. And so if there are any, you know, whatever plans we have, we have to hold off until after, after the pandemic, after, after the current situation right now. I just, I think it would be unfair to be increasing fees at this moment.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with the increased fees. This has to do with what's tracking in those, that account, the special account for, for air pollution special funds as well as water protection fund. So the CRER report in July 30th, the end of July 30, 2021, has been tracking low, the, lower than projected revenues. So I was just wondering if there's been any subsidy from the general fund because it's tracking lower. For instance, some areas, the general fund has been, or the governor has issued, not issued, but fulfilled those, those low levels of projections for certain agencies. And I was just wondering if she did that, or if there's been any funding transferred over to those accounts to assist on projects you've already implemented that needs the funding?
No funding has been transferred to the Air Pollution Control Fund to, to make up for the lapses.
Okay, and, and because of that, then you just have to hold off on any other projects because it is tracking lower?
Well, we're doing the best that we can, Senator. I mean, there's, there's multiple issues. I mean, the funding is one, but we only have two people in the air program. So, so resources is another, and I think this is, this piece of legislation is a step in the right direction in terms of moving towards autonomy. Thank you.
Has there been, Conchita, has there been an audit on, regarding the funds at all? When's the last time we audited?
You know, I, I don't know. The short answer is, I don't know. Anything dealing with the, the funding, I generally, we leave that up to the Administrative Services Officer, and, and I know there's probably some, there may be some requirements, and I leave it at that. I mean, I'm, I'm more involved in the programmatic area and fulfilling, and fulfilling the mission of the agency with respect to those programs. I wish I could be more helpful. I apologize.
Now, you've been very helpful in many other ways, Conchita, and I'm sure that because of these questions, you're going to try and find out these answers for me. I greatly appreciate it. Okay, so thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to ask these questions, and everyone create a great day.
This is Masi, Senator Tadegui, great questions, and looking forward to those responses. All right, Senator Joanne Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and certainly welcome to everyone here that's participating with regards to this bill. I did want to inquire, now that we're transferring directly the administration of these funds to the Administrator of Guam EPA, is this going to be included for the board to authorize in an annual budget how these funds will be expended? So there is, you know, there's pretty much will be a check and balance process between the board and the administrator with regards to the, the use and appropriation of these funds.
I'm going to leave that one to Brian.
Thanks, Conchita. I, I like Conchita. I don't get involved in the financial administration of Guam EPA, so I can't speak to that. We'd need to have our Administrative Services Officer on board for that. I just don't know the answer. My apologies, Senator.
Is there by any chance you don't have your deputy available for the hearing this morning? You do have a deputy at EPA?
We can try.
Yes, we do. I don't know, I don't know that answer. I'll text her and see if she can join.
Yeah, I think it would be good, because certainly, Madam Chair, before this bill is entertained on the floor, I think it would be good to get that answered. And again, it's just a question of balance. Since Guam EPA does have a board, you know, as part of the autonomy also, even for autonomous agencies, they have boards under which their budget appropriations are authorized. So I think that would be a good point to note, and perhaps before this bill is put on the floor, that at least we can get that issue addressed, so that there is just, again, a check and balance with regards to how the funds are spent. Otherwise, I have no objection with regards to regards to this leg. regards to this legislation. I think it's very much a step forward with regards to Guam EPA. And granted, we as a community, and you know, it was thirty plus years ago since Conchita and I served together at Guam EPA, but we have historically underfunded Guam EPA. I mean, we can see just going around our community the considerable mandates that the agency has, the authorities that they have. But the implementation and execution, I think we'd like to see more of that. And the only way we're going to see that happen, obviously, is provide the agency with more resources to do its job. Because as time goes on, the stresses that we have in our community on our environment are going to continue to increase. And the good thing is we're starting to see a greater amount of community concern and awareness about environmental protection, how this directly relates to each of our citizens and their quality of life, which I think ultimately is what we want to protect. So with that, Madam Chair, I'm very supportive of this legislation. And I think as soon as we can get that question answered on the administrative side with how this issue would be reviewed, or should we put that language in here to require that the board, you know, will concur or approve how these funds are spent? I think that would allow for the level of community review that we would like to see. Again, thank you for all of you that participate, and thank you again, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you so much, Senator Brown, for that suggestion, and we'll we'll reach out to the administrators of Guam EPA for response. All right, so Senator Tony Etta, if you have any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, everyone. Questions that I had, Madam Chair, were asked and answered, and I have no further questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Senator Etta, for your participation today and your presence. Senator Clint Rigel, if you have any questions or comments at this time for Bill 162.
No questions, Madam Chair, just listening to the testimony. And I do like that I thank you as a sponsor for introducing the bill and looking at ways to strengthen and improve our Guam Environmental Protection Agency. So just here to listen. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Senator Rigel, for your participation and support for these initiatives. All right, so now, is there anyone else here seeing to testify? Oh, yes, we do have another community member, Farin Tyron. Tyron, I believe you're here to testify on Bill 162.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Senators, for having me. Ahah, today, Guahu C. Farin Tyron. I am a freediving instructor, avid hiker, and like all of you, a child of Guahan that deeply cares about the health of our island herself. I am also an amateur documentarian of sorts. And through my social media moniker, the Guam Guy, I film short stories about the environment of Guam, including the aftermath at Sasadzun Cave, also known as Marble Cave. Shortly after the Kepco disaster, we also saw pictures circulating around social media, which showed the once clear water has become completely fouled with sediment and debris. However, as the word implies, that was literally just the surface. By the next day, some of the floating debris was cleared out, but you cannot know how bad it really was and maybe still is unless you look underwater. So if it pleases the honorable senators, I'd like to play one of my videos to show the extent of the disaster. It's a short video, one minute long, and I believe Mr. Evans and Nicholas will queue that up.
Oh, sorry, Farin, are we, are you talking on behalf of Bill 162, which is a?
Both, sorry. Yeah, 162 and 165.
Okay, okay, great. So we do have the video. We'll just give.
I'll go ahead and bring the video up. Oh, forgive my shirtlessness. I forgot about that. So I don't hear the audio, so I'll just provide commentary. You can see underwater, it's quite literally buried or partly buried in dirt. This particular part right here was nearly a foot deep of just muck just sitting along the bottom. Obviously, there's a fish in addition to other freshwater species you'll find in there to include shrimp and sully eel. And you can see just how high the muck came up to be inside the cave as well. Okay. So as you just saw, the bottom of the cave is, you know, buried. And after seeing the damage and knowing this was a freshwater supply for our ancestors, I can't help but feel ashamed that we didn't protect it. And yes, this is an environmental travesty, but I actually find myself feeling less offended for the environment and just more personally offended. Though important, you know, it's not just a cave with freshwater species and such. It's a part of our home, and that sanctity of our home has been violated. And the legacy of our ancestors has been literally polluted. And just more personally than that, you know, it's just a, it's a place of nostalgia and memories and family where kids learn to swim and you go to on a date with someone you care about. Maybe it's hitting me a little harder since I actually went diving inside the cave in the aftermath. But while I was still digesting what I had seen and then learning at what was assessed to be a multimillion dollar fine, get knocked down to a measly hundred twenty-five K, I just felt insulted. But now here we are with these two bills in front of us, and I am hopeful that Bills 162 and 165 will help protect our island or at the very least bring justice to violators, and of course, to better equip EPA to fulfill their mission. And so I'm here and thanks to you, senators, for putting these bills forward and to offer my support for their passage. If doing the right thing isn't enough to compel compliance from violators, then maybe the fear of punishment proportional to their level of negligence will do it. Sinamasi for having me.
Tyron, Farin, because I think, you know, we really need the community to get involved. And I've seen many of your posts and, you know, and other, like the oil spill. And I think it's really important to have our community report these incidences. And I think what you did was also critical because it helped to document the damage right after the fact that, you know, US EPA, you know, took took some time to get out here. And, you know, I think your involvement is so critical and, you know, you're very, very grateful for your engagement. So so this is Massey for your testimony and your commitment to the environment.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So now I believe we have Deputy Administrator Lasta Mosse, Michelle, welcome, welcome to our hearing. And there was a question that came up, I believe, from Senator Brown regarding Bill 162-36. And the the bill proposes to place autonomy of the special funds in within the administrator. And so there was a suggestion, perhaps, of having the board oversee the use of the special funds by the administrator. So you can probably chime in on the response to that, as well as any other questions that my colleagues had earlier. I know Senator Tidigui, I can recognize you after for the questions that you had earlier. So, yes, I just want to welcome you to Deputy Administrator, if you have any comments regarding that.
Well, thank you. We do have a Board of Directors meeting this afternoon at four. I believe the agenda has already been set, but that is certainly something I could put up on the agenda. I'll see whether or not our Board Secretary can can contact the chairman and see whether or not that could be brought up in the new business. But certainly, that will be brought forward to the Board of Directors.
Thank you so much, Deputy Administrator. I know, Senator Tidigui, you had some questions earlier, so, you know, I would like to encourage you to pose those questions.
Thank you. Off the date, Michelle, the question I had was, you know, the C R E R report as of the end of July 30, 2021, has been reporting a shortfall below adopted levels, and it's under the Air Pollution Control Special Fund and the Water Protection Fund. Has the general fund or anybody replenished it to cover any of these shortfalls in these special revenue accounts during FY21? Does this money goes directly to EPA?
We don't receive any general fund monies. Most of our funding comes from US EPA through grants. And then everything else is either a fee associated with the program.
But you do see special funds in in these areas of Air Pollution Control Special Fund, and you also receive funds from the Water Protection Fund. Are you saying that you don't receive money from these these funds?
The Air Pollution Control Fund is generated from funds that are collected from from permit fees.
Right, that are that are appropriated to EPA.
Correct.
And so is the Water Protection Fund is also appropriated to EPA, correct?
Right. Brian, who is our chief engineer, he may have more insight on on that special fund. Brian? Could we recognize?
Well, we do receive. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Senator.
Am I okay to?
Captain Bearden?
Yes, yes, I do. I would like to recognize Captain Bearden to respond. Thank you.
Well, we do receive the appropriation each year of the special funds. Again, it's just the the permit fees that we collect. As far as any shortfalls this year, I don't know. But to echo what our Deputy Administrator said, since I've been here anyway, we've never received any additional funds to make up for any shortfall in that from the general fund.
Thank you, Captain Bearden, for that answer. And, you know, I really, has there been any auditing, Michelle, done to those funds at all that you are aware of? Has there been an audit?
Yeah, so I know that there was an audit conducted by US EPA with specific language that, you know, our special funds are, you know, meant to support the operations and, you know, of that particular, of that particular program. So there was an audit. I don't have the date in front of me, but I want to say it was within the last five, ten years of that audit. If you give me a minute, I could probably look at when that audit was conducted.
Okay, okay, you said five to ten years. Sounds like it's been quite some time. And maybe revisit it, you know, to do so. But thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to ask these questions. I think it might need some more additional information. I mean, it's a question that was just, you know, brought up, and I'm sure that they would need to look at documents and any other information. Because, Madam Chair, if these special funds that were below adopted revenues and individuals like, you know, EPA plan for this funding and money for certain projects, and it falls short, you know, I don't see why, you know, the ability for general fund to cover those shortfalls can be issued to EPA. I think it's important that they stay on track with their projects and the funding that's needed. But that's something we might be able to look into. Is there any reason why EPA can't receive any general fund money? Is it against any, you know, rules or federal issues? I don't think so. So the opportunity to help subsidize them when they do fall short is important for us. So if we can look into that, Madam Chair, I appreciate it, and I'll follow up with you as well.
Thank you so much, Senator Tidigui. Yeah, I did introduce another bill. So US EPA is entitled to receive 20% of the use tax money. They would just have to submit a proposal, a budget proposal, and have, there has to be a budget hearing for that. So that's the other other requirement to receive those funds. So there is there is potential for them to get that money. So something that we could definitely work towards. Okay, so are there any follow-up questions from my colleagues at this time for Bill 162-36? Okay, so are there any other testimonies at this time? Okay, seeing that there are none.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, Senator Brown?
Well, I know it's not directly related to the bill, certainly by the presentation that was made concerning Marble Cave. I hope at the appropriate time, I know we've discussed and you've relayed that you're going to hold a hearing with regards to that issue. And certainly, I appreciate the video being provided, especially the underwater video for those of us that have not had the opportunity to go down and look underwater at Marble Cave. As you know, Madam Chair, just a few weeks ago, we actually.
Excuse me, Senator Brown, if you can turn on the video?
I don't know. Sorry about that. I didn't realize it was disconnected. Sorry, Madam Chair. But, you know, it's just a few weeks ago that you, along with Speaker Turloki, myself, and Senator Tidigui, went down to look at Marble Cave and look at the impacts that happened there. And I think as a result of that, certainly raised some questions, both on the side of the contractor, but even more so on the part of Guam EPA and their involvement or lack thereof with regards to monitoring that site. So I appreciate the information provided this morning, and I hope at the appropriate time, Madam Chair, we do have a hearing on that particular issue. Thank you very much, and thank you for all of you again that testified this morning.
All right, thank you, Senator Brown. Yes, that is forthcoming. So I'll definitely keep the public notified about when that happens. Okay, so now that there being no other questions or testimony for Bill 162-36, the hearing for this bill is duly heard. It is now 10:07 a.m. And now on to the final agenda item, which is the public hearing for Bill Number 165-36 COR, sponsored by Senator, or Speaker Theresa M. Turloki and co-sponsored by myself. It's an act to amend Section 10115A2 of Chapter 10, Title 22, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations Relative to Removing the Cap on Civil Penalty for Violations of Guam Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Regulations. So notices were sent to Guam EPA and the chairperson of the board. The fiscal note appears, says it appears to be administrative in nature by removing the $125,000 cap on all violations. That is Guam erosion and sediment control regulations. It says, absent historical data from the department, the Bureau is unable to determine the estimate of revenue collection or approximate fiscal impact. However, you know, with the recent notice of violation, we can estimate at least with that incident, the potential impact of lost fines, which is in the millions. I would like to now invite the sponsor, Speaker Theresa Turloki, for her introduction of the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your co-sponsorship of this bill and for having this hearing so promptly. So this bill is introduced to remove in the current rules and regulations of Guam EPA language that sets a cap. So it literally strikes out the phrase, "Except that the minimum amount of any civil penalty under this section shall not exceed $125,000." So this section that this phrase is in allows for a civil penalty that may not exceed $10,000 per day per violation that the, per day per violation that the violation, as the violation continues, and then sets that cap. So I want, the bill is to remove that cap, the 125. And that is because, you know, what was brought to our attention, of course, and the Marble Cave incidents, is that the proposed penalty from Guam EPA in that particular matter, I'm going to read one paragraph from their from their notice of violation to the company. And it says, "The time period over which G E P A is assessing the proposed 10,000 penalty is for a period of 368 days, from July 20 to July 23, sorry, from July 202020 to July 23, 2021. For five total violations over a period of 368 days, this amounts to a total of $18,400,000. However, the total penalty that may be assessed by G E P A is limited by 22 gar, Section 10114B to $125,000. Therefore, the total penalty amount is $125,000." So I'm trying to remove that cap on the penalty to give the discretion to the Guam EPA to do what it thinks it should do in this type of situation, including to penalize every, for every day that they they claim that there was a violation. And I agree with Mr. Tyron earlier that we do need to make our penalties proportional to the level of violation in order to deter these violations in the future. Hopefully, that's the goal. I also want to point out that this amendment would continue to give the Guam EPA Administrator discretion in many areas, including, of course, you know, the assessment of the violation and including in another subsection of the same section of the gar. It gives the administrator the discretion to determine the amount of any penalty assessed, to take into account the nature, circumstances, extent and gravity of the violation with respect to the violator, the ability to pay any prior history of violations, the degree of culpability, economic benefit or savings resulting from the violation, and any such other matters as justice may require. The current law or regulation also retains with the administrator the discretion to settle, modify or release with or without conditions, any administrative penalty which may be imposed under this section. So I think allow his continued discretion, the administrator's continued discretion will protect circumstances where, you know, discretion is required or where circumstances may be, you know, less compelling. But still, I think removing this cap on the penalty will help to serve the purpose of ensuring that companies who have to do a lot of the self-regulating and self-monitoring, self-compliance with Guam EPA permitting mandates, that hopefully removing this cap and the potential liability to these companies will help them to comply and will help EPA in its enforcement mission. So thank you, Madam Chair. That's the purpose of the bill.
Ms. Mossi, Speaker, for your authorship of this bill and for the words that you've just mentioned. That, yeah, it's important that whatever companies out there that, you know, that damage that's done by certain entities, that we are able to enforce to the fullest extent. And I think this change is so important to ensure that. You know, I think right now currently in law, by having a cap, it sort of privileges the worst offenders and that's something that needs to be changed. And so do appreciate your leadership on that. So I guess we do have people here to testify. I think there are others here that would like to testify, so I'd like to give them the opportunity before we open it up to any kind of questions. So Farin Tyron, you would like to provide additional testimony for this bill?
I've already said my remarks for both bills previously. Just to add a caveat or rather a consideration. While I do fully support the bill, I'm just curious if there was reason why there was a cap in the first place and if we're missing out on something with that. And, you know, if there isn't a good reason, then yeah, I have my full support for removing the cap.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I know we have Guam EPA here present, so I would like to recognize Deputy Director Michelle Lastamoza for any testimony and response to.
I don't have the information as to why the $125,000 cap was placed in the law. That's something that I would have to research and see whether or not there was testimony that limited, you know, limited that amount. But I don't have that information at this time. I'm sorry, Senator.
Thank you for that. But is there any testimony that Guam EPA would like to present regarding Bill 165 at this time?
I did not prepare a testimony. I don't know whether or not the administrator had submitted testimony, a written testimony. But certainly, you know, Guam EPA, we truly believe that, you know, the fines and penalties should be should match, you know, violations. And certainly with due diligence and consideration with all the factors involved in a violation. I'm sure that the administrator, along with the community, will certainly, you know, make the best decisions for the agency in terms of environmental violations.
Michelle, for that. So is there anyone else on Guam EPA that would like to testify at this point?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I did come prepared to give testimony on behalf of our administrator.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay, so Guam EPA definitely supports this bill and to eliminate the cap on the fees that we can charge under the sediment, soil erosion and sediment control regulations. We would like to point out that enforcement is extremely resource-consuming activity for us. It's one thing to get out and inspect. It's fairly simple and straightforward to issue notices of violation, but following up on these requires an enormous commitment of resources. We have to, we almost always receive an intent to appeal from any violator that we cite, which then requires us to hire a hearing officer, set up hearings with our board, and the process drags on for months or even years. Since I've been here, we have worked with this law, which is a fantastic public law that became regulation. But it's still a very slow process. We've issued, I don't have the number with me, but probably around a dozen notices of violation and proposed penalties. And we've only been able to fully settle about three of those in that time period because they drag out for so long. We looked earlier this year before the Marble Cave incident at trying to establish an enforcement program at Guam EPA that would be self-funding on the fees collected. But our calculation was that we would have to be able to achieve at a minimum four of these complete $125,000 capped fees a year just to be able to fund four people to help us follow up on these situations. And the reality is, because of the amount of resources that are involved, these are almost always settled. Once it gets into the hands of the hearing officer and the Attorney General's office, they almost always settle for something less. So to be able to eliminate that cap on the fee is very critical to us because, you know, moving forward, even if we are able to settle a larger amount, would be able to truly make a great impact to Guam EPA to be able to fund future enforcement activities. And if it's beyond the cap that we have right now, we might be able to actually use that money to fund additional inspectors to get out there and be more proactive. So we greatly appreciate this effort and we support it. But we do have one request. And the request would be to not just amend these regulations. So as I kind of hinted at here, when this particular regulation was passed, it was passed as a public law, Public Law 25-152. And as a result of being passed as a public law, it was able to include a completely different enforcement section and penalty amounts than were in our enabling statutes, which in this case is the Guam Water Pollution Control Act, which is 10GCA Chapter 47. So what we would like to request is that rather than just amend these regulations, that the entire enforcement provisions of the regulations be moved into Chapter 47 with the elimination of the cap, which would allow us to kill multiple birds with the same stone. Because not only would it improve this particular regulation, but that would also affect our ability to enforce the water quality standards and the onsite septic system regulations as well. Right now, with both of those two regulations, our only enforcement alternatives besides stop work orders is to work through the Attorney General's office to issue misdemeanor criminal charges against a violator, which I believe is excessive in most cases. If you imagine somebody with a overflowing septic tank in their yard, you know, we don't want to have someone get a criminal charge for that violation. And then that particular law is also limited to its 1974, probably a limit of $1,000 per violation per day. So that's our request would be to take that entire section, the enforcement provisions from Public Law 25152 and move it into Chapter 47. And so we'll be providing this in writing to you with our recommendations on how to do this, but that's our request. But we do support removing the cap. Absolutely. Thank you.
Right, thank you so much, Mr. Bearden, for that. I imagine that could be another bill forthcoming. I think, yeah, removing the caps at this time is probably the critical thing. So, yeah, we'll definitely can work more on that one. Okay, so now I'd like to recognize others that have come here today to present testimony. Missy Nigroklung, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your last name, if she's present here today. I saw her earlier, but I think she might have had difficulty, technical difficulties. Okay, so the next person on the list is Raye and Koska. If you can hear me, if you can turn on your video and unmute yourself prior to giving testimony. It looks like she just left the room. But we are still accepting any kind of written testimony for any agenda items, Bill 162 and Bill 165, this bill, via email or, you know, written testimony. So I think I'm going to open up the floor to my colleagues for any questions or comments. Senator Talo, Tadegui.
Ms. Mossi, Madam Chair, for the opportunity, and, you know, I stand in full support of this measure. I think Senator Brown mentioned earlier on how we took a visit down to Marble Cave to see, you know, the destruction it has caused. And it's just unbelievable to see this and then to know that there is some kind of cap related to even to repairing or mitigating the situation down there. My concern, Madam Chair, is, you know, as far as a legal perspective, the Attorney General's office does represent, and if I can ask Captain Bearden, if the Attorney General's office does handle any concerns or, you know, when prosecuting, that they do represent EPA. Is that true?
That is correct, ma'am.
Does EPA have an attorney currently at EPA that oversees him directly from Attorney General's office? Or is it something that's contracted outside?
No, we have a full-time attorney from the Attorney General's office that sits with us. She is in the office right next door to me.
Okay, well, that's very good to hear because even though with mitigations, the cost for that is extremely high. Any type of other kind of legal fees would be also, you know, a big issue, you know, going forward. Other than that, Madam Chair, again, I thank the author of this legislation, Senator Speaker Terlahe, and asked to be a co-sponsor of this legislation. I think during the time that we spent on the floor discussing this, we might even make it a stronger piece of legislation to deter anybody, anyone coming to our island when it comes to doing any kind of construction or building that first and foremost, our environment must be protected at all times. And if anything should happen, that mitigation is at the forefront. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity.
All right, thank you so much, Senator Tadegui, and thank you, Speaker. I know you have another meeting to come up, that's coming up. So I appreciate your leadership in this and your participation today. Ms. Mossi. So now I'd like to recognize Senator Joanne Brown, if she has any questions or comments. Or, sorry, Speaker, did you want to say anything before you leave? Okay. Sorry, Senator Brown, you're recognized.
No problem. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I don't have a problem with lifting the cap. I think we need to recognize each situation, certainly dependent upon what circumstances occurred and the degree of environmental degradation or damage that occurred. But again, I don't want to use this as an excuse, Madam Chair, for Guam EPA not fulfilling its obligations and its responsibilities. And again, I'll see the main bulk of my comments when we do have the oversight here with regards to the Marble Cave incident. But I also have to say that in the issuing of these penalties, we also have to ensure that our government partner, which is primarily Guam EPA as the environmental enforcer in our communities, also actively engaged because I don't buy the explanation about the limitations. And granted, I know Guam EPA has limitations. We were there at a time of tremendous growth and development on the island where we had no more personnel than 30 years ago than we have today. But key projects, large-scale projects, I think we can, you know, understand smaller projects, you know, backyard situations, overflowing septic tanks and things of that nature. How every project isn't going to be in the forefront of Guam EPA's mind. But major development projects, certainly anything, the size and the magnitude of the Marble Cave project, Guam EPA should have been far more engaged in doing field inspections to verify, always verify when they issue these conditions that the developers following them, especially because its primary role is to ensure the protection of the environment and to ensure our water quality. And I believe the agency failed with regards to that, so I'm supportive of this legislation to increase the cap. I think we also need to recognize when the government itself is not fulfilling its obligation and its responsibility to ensure the public interest. So I do support this. And I'm sure we'll have further discussion on it and certainly would like to also be included as a co-sponsor on this bill. And as I said, I don't have any problem issuing penalties to anyone who's committed any type of environmental violations. But I think we need to balance that and also ensure that the government is fulfilling its obligations to regulate these projects to minimize the damage because sometimes once the damage is done, and certainly as we see the damage of what's happened to Marble Cave and no doubt of the increased amount of sedimentation that went into our coastal waters as a result of it, sometimes that damage cannot be mitigated or we can't restore things back. And there are consequences as a result of it. I think even when the government did the construction of the road down south and that was back during the late 1980s, early 90s, when they constructed the new roadway down south, the amount of damage to our coastline and our coral resources, some of those corals were there for over 200 years that were devastated and destroyed as a result of lack of proper erosion and sediment control being put in place. And Guam EPA is the government entity that's supposed to regulate that. So I just want to take note of it because I think it's critically important. I speak from a position of experience and I know better. I know better having worked there with the men and women of Guam EPA in getting enforcement work done. And I had no reservations in doing it if these violations occurred. But we need to also ensure that the government is living up and meeting its responsibilities to properly regulate these projects. And deservedly so. If anyone violates these requirements, by all means, they should face the responsibility and the consequences of fines that are issued. But I think we need to know it's a partnership and we need to know and have some comfort that Guam EPA is out there looking out for our interests and for the interests of our natural resources. With that, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you so much, Senator Brown. Yeah, looking forward to your collaboration in regards to ensuring that our agencies have agency, right, when it comes to enforcement. And I think enforcement is one of those things that has been in need of a lot of support and improvement. So I do agree with that. And so, yeah, we will have a hearing, oversight hearing forthcoming and we'll delve further into this in regards to this bill. I think, you know, we want to kind of focus the attention on the verbiage of this bill itself and removing the caps. So, thank you. So at this time, Senator Tony Ada, if you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, everyone, again. I don't have any questions, Madam Chair. Just like to thank the author for the introduction of this bill. I think it's about time that we update our statutes and, more importantly, keep our environment and our natural resources protected. And I look forward to this bill going to the floor and having my vote so that we can continue to protect our island and hold those that are responsible accountable and giving EPA the resources that they need to continue to enforce protection for our island and our people. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to EPA.
All right, thank you, Senator Ada. So Dr. Jensen, I realize you are here. I was just wondering if you wanted to provide any kind of testimony regarding Bill 165-36?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'll just say I'm in support of it. Guam EPA and GW are, are agency partners and the. Work they do is the work we support. And I think this is an important step forward, as Captain Bearden mentioned here, to. Provide Guam EPA the resources that they need to do their job. Just like to add that, you know, as a geologist and having. The natural resources here on Guam for almost calling other universities out here. Sometimes we, we take for granted. How. Outstanding the resources are that we have here in these cave.
Okay, I'm sorry, Dr. Jensen, but yeah, you are breaking up a little bit. We lost you at this time. So perhaps we can receive written testimony. All right, so we'll, or yeah, we appreciate your presence and participation today. So I'd like to now open the floor to my other colleagues. Senator Rigel, if you have any questions or comments regarding Bill one sixty-five.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No questions, just some comments. Of course, I support the bill and I thank the author for introducing it. I think it's, it's about time. I think this has been a long time in the making and something that we should have done a long time ago and. Had this cap not been there, then Guam EPA would have been able to fine Keppco of. That eighteen million or whatever figure it is they came up with. So I support the bill and I, I think it's about time. I also want to thank Farin for all the work he does out in the community. I'm an avid follower of his, his pages, have been for a long time now. And I really appreciate it because it's a very valuable service to the community. Hey, Guam EPA should hire you maybe to be one of its inspectors to go out and. Make sure that, make sure that these places are following the, the regulations they're supposed to follow. So, yeah, full support of the bill. I don't feel bad at all for a company like Keppco if they're to be fined eighteen million dollars. You know, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, in the words of Chris Barnett, to paraphrase what he said, is not even a slap on the wrist. For a multi-billion dollar multinational corporation, the largest power producer in South Korea. This is not even a slap on the wrist. It's not even a telic of the ear. And that's something that Chris Barnett said on his show. And I agree with him. It's really not. So it's ridiculous to even think a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars would. Have any effect on a multi-billion dollar multinational corporation. It's nothing to them. So we need to make the fines appropriate and so lifting this cap will allow that to happen. And hopefully that'll help hold violators more accountable. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Senator Rigel, for your comments. Senator Tadegui, you had a further follow-up question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I ask if the committee can also seek any kind of recommendations from the Attorney General's Office as well. I haven't seen anything from there. Regarding this legislation and not just for the, you know, lifting the cap. But any other recommendations to help mitigate the issue. There's one thing paying the fine, but mitigation is another area that we need to look into. Just like when there's an oil spill. You know, they have to go and clean up what, what the damage that they caused. So I appreciate it. And then. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. Farin, I mean, Mr. Tyron as well, you know, for all that you're doing for the community. Your advocacy is, is very helpful. Especially for senators like us who look to the public for their input and you've definitely provided that for us here today. I greatly appreciate it. And please continue to do so. Sis Massey, and thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate any input from the Attorney General's Office.
Thank you so much, Senator Tadegui. Yes, for all the questions that are still unanswered, I would, the committee will follow up with Guam EPA as well as the AG's office. And will definitely include that in our committee report and perhaps make any amendments based on this public hearing. So I do want to thank everybody who's come here today to present testimony and participate in this hearing. And we do look forward to more testimonies to help strengthen our laws and make it work for our people and to ensure that we are. Deterring these, you know, types of damage, prevent any kind of damage. First of all, I prefer much to prevent this type of damage from happening. And should that, should damages occur, we, we need to enforce to the fullest extent, especially to these egregious offenses to, to our environment. So. Thanks again to everyone here. We need your support as a community together. I think we can make Guam a better place. So, Sis Massey. The time is now ten thirty-seven AM and this committee is now adjourning this public hearing. Sis Massey, have a great day.
Thank you. Have a great day, everyone.
Take care.